We'll now reopen the reorganization meeting. If everybody could stand to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order is to swear in the newly re-elected board members. This is Lori Goldhawk and Mr. Vivalo. If you would please stand and recite. You can say it together.
Together, I'm ready. I, Lori Goldhawk, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education member of the Amherst Central School District according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you. If you'd both sign up. Our next order of business is to elect board officers. Are there any nominations for Board President?
I would like to nominate Mr. Paul Steinle for the position of Board President.
I'll second this decision.
And everyone in favor for Paul Steinle being the Board of Education President, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay.
I think I'm all on the vote.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. So six to zero. Paul Steinle has been nominated as President of the Board of Education. We now need a nomination for Vice President. I can let you know that Mrs. Ernst did let me know if she was nominated, she would accept. So I now need a nomination for Vice President.
I would like to nominate Jean Ernst, please.
I'll second. And all those in favor of having Ms. Ernst as the Vice President of the Board of Education, say aye.
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 It's six to zero. And now the President, Paul Steinle. Will you take a look at him?
Do I need to do it all?
Oh, yeah. Thanks for reminding me.
Are you official?
Yes. Thank you.
I, Paul Steinle, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education President of the Amherst Central School District according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you. You can sign now. Thank you.
Okay. First order then is to committee representation. I had sent some stuff to you guys prior to this to discuss committee representation. I think we've added the names in as discussed. Is there any questions on it? Concerns? Is anyone good with it? Perfect.
So could I just reiterate then? When we do get to the approval of the organizational meeting, that Item Six, Board of Education Appointments, Delegate for ECASB Assembly is Ms. Goldhawk, Representative to ECASB Budget and Finance, Mr. Smith. Alternate to Budget and Finance, Ms. Goldhawk. Representative to ECASB Legislative Team is Mr. Smith. Alternate to the Legislative Team is Ms. Arrington. Voting Delegate to NISBA Annual Business Meeting is Mr. Smith. Alternate to that is Ms. Arrington. And then, under seven committee appointments, we have the Audit Committee as Mr. Smith and Mr. Vivalo. Letter D Policy Committee, Board Members of Jess Mabachman and Lynn Harren.
Just so everybody's aware, Mr. Smith since the annual meeting for NISBA was all online last year and he hasn't. I think there's two board members who have never attended one. Ms. Arrington and Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith. Oh, you haven't either? Oh, I thought you had. Had said he would like to go to one, so.
Yeah, actually, the last two virtually in my own office. Was there a last year virtually?
Next year, it's at Buffalo. This year, it's at Syracuse.
Twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Do you need to do appointment of officers, Mrs. Costetti? Do you?
Yes. So Ms. Williams, Mr. Farley, and Mr. Foley, I had administered them on July seventh. Those, they'd have to be administered to be myself and Acting Clerk.
All right.
Which is, this is Mrs. B. And yeah, you have to.
All right. There you go.
Ready?
I, Deborah Costetti, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
Acting Clerk
District Clerk of the Amherst Central School District according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
All right, then. We will need a motion to approve the following reorganization items. Roman numeral four, A through F. Roman numeral five, A through FF. Roman numeral six, A through I. Roman numeral seven, A through F. Roman numeral eight. Roman numeral nine, A through J. And Roman numeral ten, A through N. And Roman numeral eleven, A through M.
I need that motion?
We have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the reorganization items? Please say aye.
Aye.
And aye.
Aye.
Thanks for not saying it again.
Yeah. Motion carries six to zero. At this time, the reorganization portion of the meeting is adjourned and the regular session begins. With that, Mrs. Costetti, do we have any visitors wishing to speak?
We do not.
Okay. Reports of Boards and Committees. We do have our annual Board of Ed Protocol that we look at. Does that, you know, any changes? Anyone good with that? All right. But that will... Is that on the agenda then to adopt? Or is that just something?
It's not on to adopt. Just if there were wanted to, any changes needed.
Okay. Perfect. Anything else? Do we have any other committees or anything? All right. Then we'll turn it over to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. As you know, when the state finalized its budget in early April, we were pleasantly surprised that we were awarded additional money for UPK. And with that additional money, we were able to expand our offerings to include full-day pre-K for our four-year-olds. So it was a little bit of a whirlwind getting that up and running because it was unexpected. And we really didn't know, you know, what the guidelines were. But we quickly pulled everybody together and we were able to communicate with our parents and get that offering up and running for the upcoming school year. So I wanted to invite Dr. Shanahan just to provide the Board with an update on what UPK expansion is going to look like for the 2022-2023 school year. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm really excited to share with you this evening around the pre-K expansion because we research clearly indicates that students that get this pre-K experience, their pre-academic skills coming into kindergarten are much more proficient. And it just gives them a really good start to their education. And it's just, like Mr. Penella said, it's outstanding that we have this type of opportunity. And the presentation is broken into two parts. One is a little bit about the funding, so you understand how that trail came about. And as Tony said, it was a whirlwind. And the second part is a little bit about program. So typically, in a typical school year, there's one grant that we get for universal pre-K every year. And we look for that per-people amount. And for 2022, it was $377,955, which equates to either having a choice of 139 students attend half-day, an AM PM type thing, or 69 and a half students do full-day. And I know Mr. Penella has talked with the Director before, even before I came in this position, and they talked about, you know, do we want to go full-day or we want to stay half-day? We've always stayed in the half-day situation because we can service more students. So it's better to have more students at least have a half-day instead of losing because we lose half of our students if we went to full-day. So that's been the choice that we've made. But we've always been playing with full-day and how much we desired to have that. So as Mr. Penella said, we fast forward to this year and all of a sudden, we have an extra 378,000 for 70 full-day students. And I'd like to take you through that timeline a little bit and that whirlwind so that you can get a better picture of that, especially when you're dealing with our parents and our community. So what happened is there were two pre-K opportunities for funding up until this, we got more state aid, but the, or pre-K aid through a grant. And what we had was the money that we, you know, that I had shared with you here. Okay? Plus, there was one more opportunity and we were excited to see if we could apply for it for an expansion. When we looked into it further, the only way you could apply for the expansion is why students, having your pre-K students on a waiting list. We did not have any students on a waiting list, so we couldn't, you know, qualify for that grant. So we moved ahead with our typical budget planning, communication to parents, registration, and programming, and staffing and everything as though we had our typical funding. We wrapped that up as per usual. At the end of March, we did our due diligence to make sure families knew who was in pre-Ks, who was in the community base, the ones in just at Windermere, et cetera, like we typically would. And then, on April eighth, we went off for our spring break. So as we were off, New York State, the next day, on the ninth, released our, the New York State Budget in the state aid runs. Now, remember, there were two funding opportunities here. We didn't qualify for one and we got the other one. We proceeded. So, you know, there was, I'm sure, Mrs. Buzinski glimpsed at this as it came out, but a line-by-line analysis wasn't really done until we all got back on the eighteenth. And that is where we realized that we had over $700,000 in that line. And did some investigating to try to figure out why the pre-K line was increased. Because as I said, there was no grant to apply for and there was no communication from the state. What we found out is that was the additional funding that I just shared with you. It was the extra 378,000 for 70 full-day students. So on one side, yes, this is what we want. On the other, whoa, we've just communicated out and now we need to redo some of this in order to make it right. So we decided to go through and add the full-day pre-K, which is in the best interest of our students, which is always our emphasis. So we began immediate planning, which required looking at opening up and reserving our parents to see who was interested in full-day, who, you know, had originally applied, who wasn't. And then we're required by New York State to run a lottery system to see who would get into those different slots. It also required us looking back at transportation and recommunicating with parents. So when Mr. Penella said a whirlwind, that was the whirlwind, which took a lot of planning. So I'm going to break that down a little bit further. This is where we've landed so far. So there was a lot of shuffling as to who wanted what and who was placed in which placements. The Amherst Community Church Childcare Center, their morning session right now currently, as of last Friday, had 35 out of 36 kids. It can take a maximum of 36 in the morning. The AM slots are always the more desirable slots, so they'll, you know, they'll fill quicker. In the afternoon, we only have eight of 36, so there are openings there. We do get enrollment all the way through July and August if we continue to get interest. With A5C, there is an opportunity for a child to attend pre-K in the morning and then have extended care. So sometimes when Mrs. Redding is placing, she's looking at some of those family demands and requests that, you know, so that we can have those kids attend pre-K. So right now, we have 43 out of 72 in that community-based organization that we partner with. Amherst Nursery School, we brought back on board this year and they opened one morning slot with 18. We have 15 out of 18 in there. They're only offering one morning slot right now, so that's, you know, total gives us 58 out of 90 for our half-day program. The full-day is full. Obviously, you know, there's, you know, there's a need for a full-day programming and there is some work we can do on that, maybe with converting some slots next year. But this year, we decided to handle this in steps and pieces that were manageable to keep everything moving smooth in the right direction. So we qualified for funding for 70 with the ratio of teacher to student. We, when we go to 18 students, we have to have two adults in the room, one teacher and one teaching assistant. So instead of saying at 70, we just bumped it up to 72. So we're full on the Smallwood and Windermere. Then we had to rework transportation. So as we reworked transportation, we reached out to our parents again. The ruling from New York State in the legislation says that we have to, if we provide transportation to Smallwood and Windermere attendees, we have to provide it to all the community-based organizations. So any of our students, if we're going to decide to provide transportation, which is not a requirement of the program, we have to extend that to every, you know, all of our partners as well. And the reason that we chose, you'll look at a lot of districts don't provide transportation because it can be an added expense. However, it also can be a barrier to kids attending. So one of our goals was to make this preschool accessible, provide the transportation if it is needed. So you can see we have approximately, this year, 56% of our population is actually attending, or, sorry, taking advantage of the transportation.
Dr. Shanahan, I'm just adding before you go into what the programming may look like, that, you know, one of the biggest obstacles we faced in the expansion was space. You know, because A5C is limited in the number of classrooms that they offer to us. Same thing with ANS. In addition, you know, A5C has the childcare in the afternoon. They also have folks that enroll there through programming they offer that's separate from UPK. So part of our expansion problem is space. Knowing that we can service more kids with the current allotment that we have and knowing there's probably an increasing demand for full-day, we know that's something we're going to have to tackle as we continue with this programming in subsequent years.
Go ahead. Are any of those people out of district?
No. These are our, these are our in-district students. These are our, these people that live within our catchment area. So then, the next task is to actually fit everything together. So we need to fit a schedule together that aligns with busing. We wanted our pre-K students on separate busing than our K through five students. So we worked on busing with Mrs. Buzinski. And then we also had to work on aligning with the teacher contract. And then we also looked at the, some of the state requirements. And they want a minimum instructional time for our pre-K students to be at minimum five hours. So we were doing five and a half hours of actual instructional time with students. So we had to, our start and end times at Windermere and Smallwood are slightly different. And so we had to align those schedules so that they're getting equitable programming in both full-day sites, which is what we did here. We're curriculum development. We have a really strong literacy, math, science curriculums at the pre-K level already. I'm very confident with what our programming is and what we're doing, although it's always under a state of review and revision. But we also are going to have to add in this year in the afternoon gross motor time, nap time. So there are some other, and also, I'll talk to you in a minute about lunches, our instructional time. Meal time is instructional, whereas in K through five, it's not instructional time. Teacher drops them off, they go and they eat. So this is also considered part of instructional time in New York State if you choose to make it that way. So we are basing the curriculum changes as we move across this year on the New York State pre-K standards. There's a real thrust for play-based learning. So through play, for parents, we know through play it's the cognitive, social, emotional language and physical development occurs. So we're keeping that as a perspective and basis and foundation for our instruction. We'll continue to work on social, emotional learning. We also, you know, are, we have a rich, multi-language community and we'll make sure that materials, supplies, resources, and our instruction really does take into consideration the linguistic and cultural background of our students because that's part of our richness. And we also will reflect on the National Association for Education of Young Children for research-based. We, all of our instruction is based on foundational research. So these are some of the resources we're currently using. For, even if you're looking at like the gross motor time, I'm working with Jeff Wheaton and some of our physical education teachers. So our pre-K teachers may not, you know, they may not, they're not trained in gross motor, but they're supposed to be providing that instruction. So what is that curriculum going to look like? And then what professional development are we providing them so they're prepared to do that? So we're working on that as far as curriculum goes right now. So these are glimpses. What I'm hoping to do is just give you a little bit of an idea of what it looks like. And then, as we're moving through the year, we can hopefully bring in some real images as kids are going through their day. So obviously, they come in, they breathe, they have the morning meeting where they're having some interaction and a start to their day. Meals, snacks, our instructional times. We're learning how to help ourselves. We're learning how to, you know, eat. We're learning our manners. We're learning how to use utensils. And also, you're just self-care as well. There's specific ELA instruction that goes on center. Center time is where a lot of the play-based learning is going to occur. So you'll see that periodically throughout the day. And this is even, it's 10:20 to 10:30. Where will you go? What will you do? Decision-making. There's different spaces you can work and we can't all go to one space. Where are we going to go? What are we going to do there? So this is good, you know, thinking for students. Then they'll have learning center time. We're going to continue with our curriculum building blocks. Our building blocks was by Dr. Doug Clements and Dr. Julie Sarama. And we're going to continue with that programming. It's worked well for our students and we'll maintain course there. And as I said in the moment lunch, I'll share with you how that becomes instructional time. We're required by New York State to provide quiet/nap time. So we're providing, we have to provide the time. Some children might want to nap. Some children might not want to nap. They can rest. Or if they would prefer to do something quiet in a space, we have to provide that. So any three of those different settings could be happening during this, what we would typically call nap time. Gross motor is in addition and that's what I'm working on with Mr. Wheaton right now and some of our physical education teachers and the development of that. In pre-K, K1, one of the most critical indicators of students' literacy success is phonemic awareness. So there will be an alignment in there. We have been fortunate that our pre-K program always aligns vertically with our first, our K1, two. So we're continuing that. We use a program Hegarty last year in pre-K and we'll continue to use that this year. And we use that in K and we use it in one and we use it in two. So there's a good alignment across all the different levels. Free play center, which is important for social, emotional skill development, closing meeting, obviously, your self-help skills. We all know what that's like. Get your coat, you know, get your jacket, all that stuff on. So that's just a general outline of what they're anticipating the day looking like. You know, there's sort of lots of time that they're moving through.
Yeah, I would just add the, you know, part of, you know, planning for this was putting together the staffing. So of course, we had to hire some teachers. We had teachers that were on board doing our half-day programming. And then we had to host a position to fill out our fourth in-district, our full-day program. It's exciting to have 36 kids in each of our elementary school in full-day programming. But when you think about it, our kindergarten class in each building is about 100 to 115 kids typically. So we do want to expand and we do have to consider how we can do that relative to space. Did you get an update on the purchase order for the adult-sized nap pod?
I have a special corner for you. Yes, yes. Absolutely. Mrs. Buzinski said you cannot have that. She's tight with the budget this year.
I'll set something up tomorrow to discuss.
And Mr. Penella brings up an important point. One of the things that is happening on July 18th is all the full-time pre-K teachers will get together because they haven't walked through a day. So one of, when I was talking to Mrs. Redding, I'm like, how are we preparing them? Like, what are you doing to get them thinking in full-day versus half-day? Because even the three that were already there, they haven't taught full-day. Do they know about gross motor time? They don't typically feed lunch. Are they, do they understand what to do during those points and times, et cetera? So she's having a whole meeting with them again this month and then we have stuff in across the year. And even with our half-day, we will continue that same professional development as well. It'll just be tailored to what their specific needs are.
Yeah, you may recall, we have Mrs. Zappi, Mrs. Marr, and Mrs. Shutz as our three in-district, either part-time or full-time. One of them was full-time, two of them were part-time, pre-K teachers at Windermere. So of course, they will continue in our full-day classrooms. And then Mrs. Slocum, one of our primary teachers from Smallwood,[1557.18] And then Mrs. Slocum, one of our primary teachers from Smallwood, will take the fourth classroom. Um, so we have really high-quality instructors for all of our full-day classes and great partners with our community-based organizations to get this off the ground in really a short period of time successfully for the upcoming school year.
And, and that's really important because the, you can provide the space and you can provide the time. But if the curriculum and the understanding of child development isn't there, that we won't harness what we could out of having the students there and having this funding. So we're very excited about that and we have excellent instruction. So the family-style meal is something that I was like, that's instructional time? In my whole life, I've never, but I'm thinking, yes, it's for me at home as a mother, it was too. So of course it is. So, um, in that five and a half hours, one of the things the state lays out is that it should be teachers and children and our TDA should be sitting with our students and should be eating in a family-style meal. They should be doing that for snacks as well. These are some of the lovely things. You've probably gone through as parents, there'll be fine motor skills as they're eating, um, how to talk, you know, across the table during mealtime, how to say I don't like something appropriately. Um, and then, you know, just practice using some table manners. So that will be, um, time spent for them. And then there's cost of pre-K is similar to the K to 12. There's a breakfast cost as well as a lunch cost, which I outlined there, $2.50 for lunch, $1.35 for breakfast. And they can take advantage of my school bucks as well. So we were also thinking of our families. Like, we, a lot of us as parents, we want our kids to be in these programs, but then we have these things called jobs. And our start times and end times may not align well with the schools. And so we did, we provided some options for our families. So Amherst Nursery School doesn't provide the RAP care in the afternoon, but there are people that just want morning care, or the morning, um, preschool and that's it. So we have that available. Amherst Community Church Center, they can do a half-day pre-K and a half-day of a daycare situation if mom and dad have to work. Um, and Smallwood and Windermere will be offering Just for Kids, um, for, specifically for pre-K next year, which was a new endeavor that, um, Mrs. Bezinski worked on with our principals to get that up and running. And I thought, what does that look like? Because that's my baby that's four. So the good news is, um, what that looks like for Just for Kids is they have to follow the regulations of a 1 to 8 ratio. So any pre-K or K students can't be in more, in a classroom of more than eight students for that, um, RAP care, that after-school care. Um, and they cannot be mixed with, with anybody above, um, kindergarten. So you're going to have your four and five-year-olds together, um, potentially. And they must have separate and dedicated spaces with appropriate materials and supplies in those places. Um, and we'll, we will allocate one space for our pre-K or pre-K and K students. We're working on that right now. And then they'll obviously move to different spaces. It's important that they move. They might use a gym, a cafeteria, a classroom, be outside. So we will, um, just not mix them with our older students in jail. Just for Kids is going to adhere to that. That's a preview and hopefully when it's off and launched, we'll come back and be able to share more of actually what it looks like when it happens. Do you have any questions?
I do have a question about the cost of meals. Um, are we, uh, I know for the past couple of years, there has been no cost to meals throughout the district. Has that changed for this upcoming year?
Do you want to address that?
That waiver expired on June 30th.
Okay. So then with regard to the pre-K cost for meals, since the meals are supposed to be educational time and the meals are provided family-style within the classroom, it would be, I would think, very hard for a parent to decline a meal.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I'm not.
Parents have the ability to send meals in with their students, just like our K-12 students do.
Sure.
And parents also have the ability to fill out free and reduced lunch applications. So if they qualify, then all free and reduced is free.
Right.
So that is still in place. So if they qualify for a free meal, then they, it would just be served to them and they would, would have no cost. But if they don't, then, um, they will need to have money on their my school bucks account.
Was this a change?
It used to be free.
Yeah, half-day, when my kids were in half-day UPK, we didn't pay for breakfast.
We were talking about this because it was, it was a change, right?
In half-day UPK, we had originally snacks. And snacks, we were allowed to use grant money to pay for that. And when we expanded that a little bit, the grant is not supposed to pay for reimbursable meals if your school participates in the USDA reimbursement program, which of course we do. So because the federal government is providing us reimbursement, we are not supposed to use the state monies to then further supplement those dollars.
And that's something we just, we've just been working on in the past couple of weeks with Tracy. And so we are going to have to drill down and even work with like our director a little bit more as to what that's going to look like. That's one of those things, the whirlwind part, that just we keep unearthing because we did fund that before through the grant. But it was just two weeks ago that we realized we can't do that anymore. But good questions and I think we have to address that even with the director and with the teachers, like what does that look like, what do you do? Those are the, that's the work that still needs to be done.
Do we have, um, do we have a waitlist for the full-time or do we have a lot?
If we could open up more full-time, we would have people switch over, I think, too. Um, but we, it was really quick and we wanted to do it well. So we did consider opening one more and trading in, um, some of our half-day slots for that. But we also knew that we were at maximum speeding capacity for what we could do well. So instead of, you know, opening up everything and not having things well organized in a high-quality program, we decided to work this through this way and see how it works. And then we'll, when we go into next year, we'll, like, um, Mr. Penella said, we would like to add additional full-time.
Yeah, I think there was two considerations relative to that. One, space, um, because we were at max capacity with two pre-K classrooms at Windermere and two at Smallwood. The second consideration is, once we convert a slot to full-day, it has to remain full-day. So our funding originally allowed for 139 half-day and then the expansion grant gave us 70 full-day spots. If we were to turn all of our spots into full-day, we could offer 139 full-day spots. But if we make that decision, we can't go back and offer half-day. So we thought it was best at this point to kind of walk before we run, given the timing of all of this. So we are offering, I think, two more. We're offering 72 full-day spots because of the spacing that we have available. And then we tried to maintain as many half-day spots as we can through our community-based organizations. Um, but that's why some of the conversations we've had in our capital construction committee centers around, um, a potential addition to one of our buildings in order to add more pre-K classrooms, so we can expand the full-day offerings. Because I think last time we talked about it, we may have had 20 to 25
Right.
um, full-day requests that we weren't able to fulfill. So we had to do a lottery system to, um, pick the ones that were able to, um, for the first year, go into the full-day program. Those are the two main things. Once you go forward, you can't go back in space.
And which Windermere teacher is going over to Smallwood?
Uh, isn't Mrs. Shutz?
I think it's Shutz.
Yeah?
No, it's the two.
They're both.
They're both going. Shutz and Zappi?
And Slocum's going.
And Slocum, Smallwood was Slocum. She's coming to Windermere, um, with Mayor and Shutz and Zappi are going to Smallwood, um, together. I think we were also concerned with, um, our, um, community-based organizations. What, you know, really quickly, if we add more and we're tight on space, but we add more, what's the impact to them too? Because they, they've engaged in a partnership with us and they have classes and they're anticipating that. So we just want to be mindful of our partnerships too going forward.
I think it was a valiant effort, um, to get up and running for full-day for the upcoming school year, given the circumstances and notification and timing of the funding. Um, like I said, I, I do expect this to evolve over time and I'm excited to see where it goes. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
That's all I have tonight. That's the superintendent's report.
Then I will need a motion to approve new business items. Roman numeral 16, A through F, Roman numeral 17, A through E, and Roman numeral 18, C, D, and G.
I'll make motions for approved new business items.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, as outlined, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Mrs. Costetti, I don't believe we have any follow-up back to that item. Yep, and we then will need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Vigllo is quick on that. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming.